Okay, great. With that, we will move to item 21. This is the Safe Medicine Disposal Extended Producer Responsibility Study Session. We are joined by staff from Department of Public Health or Health Services who will make self-introductions.
Great, sounds good. Good morning Chairman Correa, members of the board. I'm Brian Vaughn. I'm the Director of Health Policy Planning and Evaluation for the Sonoma County Department of Health Services. And I'm here with Susan Keach from the Sonoma County Water Agency. We're presenting you today a study session on the history and current efforts around safe medicine disposal here in the county. And also would like to provide you an opportunity to discuss extended producer reliability ordinances across the state and how that may present an opportunity for us to expand and enhance our current safe medicine disposal efforts here in the county. So just for a little bit of background real quickly, just regarding medication use in Sonoma County and why unused medications is a concern here in the county. First and foremost, we note that 66% of all adults use some type of prescription medication. Adults 65 and over, on an average year, fill about 31 prescriptions per year. And we estimate about a third of those medications go unused. We also know that a large portion of unused medications are currently flushed or thrown away in the garbage. And that that presents some potential risks, both on health and environmental concerns. On the health side, we know that unused medications for us is an area of real concern, particularly around medications of abuse. We know recent data shows us that emergency room visits, particularly around opioid use overdoses, has increased by 75% in the past five years, which is consistent, we know, with the trend in opioid use across the nation. Drug overdose deaths, both nationally and now in Sonoma County, exceed all other causes of injury-related deaths, including traffic accidents. We know that 77 children here in the county, on average, have visited an emergency room here for an unintentional drug overdose per year between 2012 and 2014. And that residents have easy access to opioids. We estimate about 1 in 4 residents every year has some sort of prescription opioid medication prescribed to them. On the environmental side, we also know that these medications do get out into the environment. There's been numerous studies, we know nationally, that have detected medications in various waterways. We also know that improper disposal of medications may contribute to this and probably are a likely contributor. This we know because people are flushing either their medications down the toilet, and that's entering the waterway, or they're putting it in the landfill. And we know through the leachate that that can also be contaminating our environment and our waterways as well. So that's just a brief background. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Susan to discuss our current program and the efforts to date around safe med disposal.
Thanks, Brian. So, as you can imagine, there's been a growing concern over the last decade or so from governmental agencies and from communities related to the health and safety and environmental issues that are caused by the improper disposal of medications. So, to address these concerns, a group of Sonoma County agencies has been working together since 2005. We came together voluntarily, and I think we formed a pretty amazing group of people who are really focused on handling these problems. So at the beginning in 2005, some of the agencies that got together were Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, the Russian River Watershed Association, Sonoma County Water Agency, City of Santa Rosa, and the Department of Health Services. We've been working together all this time to develop what we have now, our current Safe Medicine Disposal Program. It was a way for us to try and divert these medications in a way that prevented them from getting into the environment or accumulating people's medicine cabinets and causing some of the problems that Brian just talked to us about. It's a free service. It's provided to residential customers, and it allows people to safely collect and dispose of their waste medications. We have about 24 bins right now that are scattered all around Sonoma County. Most of them are situated in hospitals, pharmacies, law enforcement offices, senior centers, and medical clinics. We tried to design these programs to be super easy for people to use. And literally, all they need to do is either phone us or go on our website to find a convenient location. They can take their medications, just like in the photo here, put them in a little Ziploc bag, take them to a nearby drop-off site, pop them into the safe medicine bin, and they're done. Once those bins are full, we have licensed medical waste hauler that'll come and pick up those medications, secure them, and safely transport them out of state to a certified incinerator for proper disposal and destruction. So, as you can see from this graph, this shows our totals of medications that we've been collecting since our program started. And you can see, like in 2008, our programs collected just over 3,000 pounds of medications. Here in 2015, we've collected over 19,000 pounds of waste medications. And you can see also by the graph that the demand and use has gone up every year. One thing that's not really apparent in this is that, from the beginning of our programs to the present, we've actually decreased the number of sites that we had when we first started. But we're still seeing a tremendous use of our drop-off sites. And there's another little button. So, and here's an incredible milestone. In April this year, we hit 100,000 pounds of waste medications. That's an unbelievable amount of waste medications that are going to be diverted from the environment and removed from people's medicine cabinets. So, you know, even though we've been working together for over a decade now, and we've really accomplished a lot. Our group has really pushed forward on this issue. We're still facing a lot of challenges at this point. And if we really want to continue this service for our communities, we're really going to have to step back, I think, reevaluate how we fund and operate these programs. Some of the problems we're looking at right now are, you know, as you can see from that graph, the growth of the program continues to go in a positive direction, and it's really unsustainable with our current resources. We're kind of maxed out at this point. The other issue is, we have some, our options for disposing of controlled substances like opioids, which are causing so much problem in our communities with overdoses and misuse. We just have really limited options available for people to get rid of those types of medications. And then, the other issue is, the producers and manufacturers of these medications are just not participating in the end-of-life management of their products. Everything is on the shoulders of government agencies who are managing these programs and for ratepayers to help funding these programs. So, what do we do at this point? How do we go forward? We think that a good thing to look at would be Extended Producer Responsibility Ordinance, or EPR, one that would be focused on medications. EPR laws are a general category of laws designed to protect our communities from negative impacts from various products. They're designed to have manufacturers of a specific product design, manage, and finance programs that take care of the end-of-life management of their own products. And like I said, they're really nothing new. We see them all the time for things like paint, mattresses, and batteries. Pretty commonplace. A Safe Medicine Disposal EPR ordinance would focus specifically on medications. And even in that case, these are not new laws. We see these in other countries around the world. In France and Spain, they have pretty robust take-back programs. In Canada, for example, there's been a nationwide EPR law that's been in place for over 20 years now. It's quite successful, and it's added less than one cent per prescription to the cost of anybody's medication. Here in the United States, Alameda County was the first county to adopt a Safe Medicine EPR ordinance in 2012. And they hit a lot of headwinds from manufacturers and producers. But overall, the ordinance has been upheld despite some significant legal challenges. And it's my understanding that their programs are moving full speed ahead. They're working on stewardship plans with some of the groups there, and they're implementing their ordinance. So, some of the benefits that we would see here in Sonoma County, if we decided to go with an Extended Producer Responsibility Ordinance for medication, would be, we'd have an increased number of the total collection sites available to our residents. We could have a better geographical distribution of those locations across the county. That would make it more secure and convenient for people to use these sites. And very importantly, we would be shifting a substantial portion of the cost to operate these programs from county and local residents to the medical producers and manufacturers. This is going to allow us to meet the increasing demand from residents for these services. And honestly, let's face it, the less medicine we have going down the toilets and into landfills and accumulating in people's medicine cabinets, the less negative impact we have to the environment, and the more we can increase our public health safety for children and seniors who are having some issues with abuse and accidental overdoses. Unfortunately, right now, at the state level, we don't have an EPR program in place. Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, I think it was in 2014, tried to get something moving, and it just didn't go through. So what we're seeing is that at a state and county level, we're seeing a lot of local agencies stepping up to the plate in either adopting, or they're in the progress of adopting, an EPR ordinance for medications. And here's a list of some of them that have already adopted or they're in progress adopting an ordinance. People like City and County of San Francisco, San Mateo County, Santa Clara, Marin, Santa Cruz, of course, Alameda, which we just hit on, Santa Barbara, the City of Santa Cruz, and the City of Capitola. There's a real movement towards implementing EPR for medications. We also see this type of activity even outside of California. In Washington, they've had an ordinance in place since 2013. Chicago, right now, is starting to take up this process and having lots of conversations on what type of ordinance that they could put in place for their communities. And even here in Sonoma County, we've been seeing a lot of interest and activity in support of an EPR ordinance for medications. In 2015-16, the Russian River Watershed Association received letters of support from all the cities, from the Town of Windsor, and the Sonoma County Water Agency Water Advisory Committee, and the Santa Rosa Board of Public Utilities. All of these letters, which I believe everybody got copies of them in their packets, show really strong support for the idea of having an EPR ordinance in place. And also, in the same timeframe, the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, in February of 2015, their agency board expressed pretty strong interest in developing some information and planning for an EPR ordinance. And then, the other thing they did is they've developed an online survey. It's currently in progress, and I would encourage people to go on to the Safe Medicine Disposal website and take the survey. It's designed to gauge people's needs and interest in an EPR for medications. And also, it's addressing questions that are geared towards Sharps, like epi pens. Who's going to want to throw those away now, right? So, epi pens and needles, you know, for people who maybe are diabetic. So, there's definitely a need for that. And I actually have some updated information regarding the number of responses we've received. We have about 1,700 responses so far. Most of them are really strongly supportive of the whole idea of EPR ordinance. And we're also getting a lot of responses, I think just shy of about 500 responses, related to Sharps disposal. So there's definitely a need, and I think there's definitely an interest, to develop a long-lasting, sustainable program that will help people get rid of their waste medications and possibly even their Sharps.
Great, thank you, Susan. So, should your board want to move forward with developing a potential ordinance here in the county? There will be a couple of considerations that we'd want to come back and provide options and some additional research for the board. This is particularly around the definition of what is covered, whether over-the-counter medications, or as Susan mentioned, Sharps and other medication delivery devices will want to be included as part of that ordinance. Also, some definitions around what is a convenient, universal access. I'll show you the subsequent slides here around sites that require or have voluntary sites in locations, whether you want them at pharmacies, hospitals, and in law enforcement agencies, whether to include mail-back services, and what type of public education campaign we'd want to build into the ordinance. So here's just a breakdown of seven of the ordinances that have been implemented so far. As you can see, the majority, with the exception of Santa Cruz, have implemented a county-wide ordinance. And we know that Santa Cruz is also working closely with their three cities to develop a uniform ordinance. All of them have included, to date, over-the-counter medications. Two of them have included Sharps. One of them, Santa Cruz has actually mandated the sites to require to hold those bins. All of them have included mail-back options. And all of them have included, or at least required, manufacturers to provide a public information campaign. So these will be considerations that, if we move forward, we'd want to bring to the board, provide additional options and considerations for deliberation.
Brian, before you go to the next slide, if you can go back, could you just tell the board and members of the public what OTC?
Sorry, over-the-counter medications.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
The question was bound to come from at least someone on the diet.
Got it. My apologies. So, just in regards to next steps, should your board want to move forward, we would ask that you direct staff to continue working collaboratively with the existing Safe Medicine Ordinance Collaborative, and then also to work with the cities to develop a model EPR ordinance that we can all agree on, knowing that there's already support. Also, direct staff to conduct outreach efforts to local stakeholders to solicit feedback and answer any potential questions. And then also, direct us to return to the board with an ordinance that includes that deeper analysis and research on those potential options. So with that, we'll take any questions?
Great, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Susan. Just so folks know, how the board will engage in members of the public. I currently have two public speaker cards on this item. This is a study session, but the intent is to get board questions, provide board input. We certainly want to hear from members of the public that are here on this item with the hope that we will provide direction on what next steps. I think some of them have been outlined. So, maybe what we can do is we can get board questions first. I'd like to take public input, and once we take public input, have the board deliberate on any potential direction. So, I'm going to look to the board for questions first at this point. I'm going to take the purview as a representative on the Russian River Watershed Association. And to Regis Gore, you're the primary on that. I'm going to look to you first for questions, and then go to the rest of the board. And once again, I do intend to go to the members of the public. I've got two speaker cards. To this point, you're not required to fill one out if you wish to speak on this item. It just makes it easier for me to go through this process. So, any questions that you have at this time?
I appreciate it. And I'm glad that I see Andy Rogers filling out a speaker card, too, because I hope that, you know, as the Executive Director of the Russian River Watershed Association, he can give a little bit of flesh to the background and the outreach. I see that Mark Landman isn't in the House with us today. But, yeah, as the Chair of the Russian River Watershed Association, he's really been very active in this. And I'll leave it to Andy to talk about their outreach and what they did in approaching every city. It's one of the things this board has talked about a lot with respect to ordinances, is a different approach, which is going around and getting a lot of city support before they come to us to adopt something, rather than always coming to us and then going out to the cities to implement. So I appreciate that. I think one of my questions, Brian, is I think you can maybe elaborate for this board a little bit, some of the legal questions you've been asking about cities and other things. You and I had a meeting with county council about this. And it was based on an assumption that if we adopted a county-wide ordinance initially, as it would cover, but then there was some question about that. So you're going to have to go back and do some more coordination with some of the cities, no matter where we go, correct?
Absolutely. So, and Susan can probably speak more to this. The collaborative has included actually representatives from all the cities. It's been a very collaborative effort, to your point. And so, regardless of how we implement it, we're going to want the cities' buy-in. We believe we have it. It's just settling on some of the options to make a model ordinance that we can bring back to the board for approval.
So, in essence, what they did is they signed a resolution, every single city in Sonoma County, saying, "We support this effort with a resolution." And what they would need to go back with is some kind of, you know, if whatever we adopt, they would adopt the same thing. It wouldn't be us being a blanket covering.
Correct. So, if the cities wanted to then sign on to the ordinance that's passed by the board, then that's, we'd go back and ask them.
Okay, thank you. I'll let my colleagues ask some questions.
But I think that, because as part of the packet, we had, I think, a letter from every city, either from the city mayor and/or from the city manager. But to this point, they have not formally approved an ordinance or a resolution of sorts, but they've provided a direction that they're interested, at least in...
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be...
Clear, yeah. So those considerations, we'll still have to work with all the jurisdictions to develop a model ordinance, particularly around those kind of questions, what's included in product definition.
Sure, sure. Okay, and maybe we can come back to that once the board is at the point where we can provide direction. Supervisor Gore, any questions?
Really quickly, I also wanted to thank Councilmember Mark Landman for his activism on this issue. I know he and I had a long conversation when I was Chair of the Board last year. And so, I'm delighted that this is coming forward. I'm also delighted that he has gone to each of the cities and gotten their buy-in, and so it makes it much easier, rather than the reverse. I appreciate that. Really quick question. Yes, let's jump on this, and I'll probably have some more comments later. When, if we give you direction to take it back and work on it and bring some of the specifics back, when would it most likely become effective?
Well, I think because we've done that, the legwork of working with the cities already to get their at least initial buy-in, I actually think we can work pretty swiftly with this, and hopefully get something back by the end of the year.
That would be great. The sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned. And I was, I think I'd mentioned to you, my husband received some opioids because of his pain for his bicycle accident. And I was shocked that one of our healthcare providers told him, directed him, to flush it down the toilet. And I went, "Ah! What were they doing?" So I will continue to have conversations with them. But it just reaffirmed that we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, and I'll note that the FDA actually still recommends flushing down controlled substances down the toilet.
Well, I guess we have some problems with the FDA as well.
There's a lot of confusion out in the public about the best way to handle medications. Some of them can go into these bins, and, you know, some of them, we're not supposed to be collecting controlled substances. Do they find their way in our bins? Probably. Some of them are not obviously controlled substances. We all know the, you know, Vicodins and Percocets and stuff. But there are a lot of medications that people just don't understand it's a controlled substance. So, that would be something we'd have to incorporate into the ordinance to make sure that people have a way to get rid of any medication that they have.
Supervisors, any questions at this point?
Thank you. I do want to thank Susan, too. You have been exemplary in terms of leading your staff on implementing this program that we are all paying for right now. So, thank you so much. The question I had was, had to do with the legal opposition. Because actually pharmaceuticals don't want to have to pay for this, even though they are the second-largest wealthy industry in the nation, just behind oil. I know that Alameda was challenged legally. Talk about the outcome of that, because that's kind of what we were waiting on when I introduced this two years ago as a member of the Waste Management Agency. We were waiting to see what happened with Alameda. It's taken us a long time to get here, and I don't want to be like the plastic bag band where it takes us way too long. So, talk about Alameda. What happened with Alameda?
Well, I can give you a little timeline of what they went through. And they definitely were leading the charge. And they've really paved the way for the rest of us to have, I think, will be an easier time. Not that we won't face some legal challenges, but I think we know what to expect, and we know maybe how to design these programs in a way that will be a little easier for people to deal with. So, they got started, Alameda County got started in 2012. On July 24, 2012, Alameda County was the first county in California to pass an EPR ordinance for medications. And you can guess, they were immediately challenged by Pharma. It's an organization representing pharmaceutical manufacturers and producers. So, in September 30, 2014, the Ninth Circuit Court rejected their challenge. And guess what happened again? They pursued it again by filing for a review by the U.S. Supreme Court. And that took place on December 24, 2014. So, now it's going to the U.S. Supreme Court. And May 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court denied to review their petition. So, that upheld the ordinance, and now they're moving forward with it. So, they've really taken the lion's share of dealing with a lot of the opposition that people can expect.
So, just to call out in my history with this, to Nate Miley, who's an Alameda County Supervisor, who is really championing this and has been my colleague on the airboard for many years, and took me aside and told me, you know, "We're going to do this." So, it's really good to hear that the Supreme Court, even the Supreme Court, said, "Sorry, this isn't going to fly in spite of Pharma's challenges." I think we need to note that, and so, thank you for taking us down that timeline. I really appreciate it. And then, one last question. How much did we all spend? I see, I think we spent $262,000 in 2014. What about 15? I don't know if I had that.
So, in 2014, when we had the symposium to sort of update everybody with the activities over the last decade, that information was really highlighting hauling and disposal costs alone. So, over the last few months, we started, all of our, all of the members of our collaborative started to put together all of the numbers for labor, for legal, for consultants, for the hauling and disposal, for our outreach programs, for everything. And the grand total since 2007 is pretty close to $1.4 million.
Wow.
I think we all have the ability to break that down by categories in-house, but I can give you some of the grand totals for at least three of our agencies. So, Sonoma County Water Agency since 2007 has spent approximately $622,000. Russian River Watershed has spent close to $337,000. City of Santa Rosa has spent close to $435,000. So, yep, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's a lot of money that we could have spent on better things. So... Just curiosity, question, how many people have drugs in their cabinet right now that they aren't using drugs? I say pharmaceuticals. I know. Almost everybody always raises their hand. Just interesting, yeah. Thanks, you guys. Great job. I've got some more comments, but I'll wait for the chair's request.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that from the board, because I think that this board will certainly have a lot to say as to what the next steps and how to frame that. We're going to start taking some comment from members of the public. I have three speaker cards at the moment. At the conclusion of the last speaker card, it'll certainly open up to any other members that are here to wish to comment on this item. And once again, this is a study session regarding the Safe Medicine Disposal, potential Extended Producer Responsibility. So, we're going to start with Reese Isbell, followed by Chris. Chris, I believe it's Stuart, Chris Stewart, followed by Cactus Speed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Reese Isbell. I am the Director of Local Government and Community Relations with the California Life Sciences Association, or CLSA. CLSA is the largest statewide life sciences, public policy, and business leadership organization representing California's life science innovators, including medical device, diagnostic, biotechnology, and pharmaceutical companies, research universities, private and nonprofit institutes, and firms. Overall, California life sciences sector directly employs more than 281,000 people and indirectly employs another 581,000, totaling nearly 1 million California-based jobs. The stated goals of preventing the abuse of prescription medicine and diversion of pharmaceutical waste are laudable. But there is no science that suggests drug take-back is a better option for disposal versus household trash. And that was stated in the presentation earlier. One of the stated desired outcomes of these programs is to reduce the amount of active pharmaceutical ingredients, or APIs, found in waterways. However, the major source of pharmaceuticals in the environment, 80% to 90%, is due to human excretion. There is no evidence that take-back programs achieve the goal of reducing APIs, yet there is significant evidence that the current practice of household trash disposal is a safe and preferable alternative. Disposal kiosks for used Sharps create significant risks due to potential hazardous material and non-Sharps waste being deposited in them. The California Board of Pharmacy has also expressed concern about retailers taking back used Sharps. California has several recycling programs in place to manage disposal for particularly challenging products, cell phones, computers, mattresses, tires, television... challenging products, cell phones, computers, mattresses, tires, televisions. However, all of them come with a user fee to cover the costs. Those fees are paid by the consumer and disclosed upfront at the point of sale. However, these proposals with EPR require that all the costs be paid by private entities. Hence, there is no accountability downstream with customers and constituents to show that the program is actually working and accomplishing the goals. The proposals withhold granting the industry the authority to compel other parties to participate in implementation of the program. Ultimately, the responsibility falls solely on the industry. This has been shown specifically in Alameda in their implementation, they have not been able to get anyone to work with them, the retailers or pharmacies, and are currently still working with only the Sheriff's Departments. We urge support for a state or federal level solution so that there is not a patchwork of counties around the state. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Reese. And I believe that the full board did also receive the written communication from CLSA a day or two ago, so I know I read my letter from you folks, so, yeah. Chris Stewart, followed by Cactus Pete Chernoff.
My name's Chris Stewart. I'm Chairman and CEO of the North Bay Life Science Alliance, which is four-county initiative of Marin, Sonoma, Napa, and Solano County to grow the life science industry up here. I take a little bit different perspective. Mine is more of a pragmatic approach. I agree with you. I think we need to get these medicines out of the mainstream collection system. The question is, how do you do it pragmatically and effectively? These programs have historically proven that you need 50% education and 50% convenience to make it work. Manufacturers have no direct relationship with the consumer on this. Most, all of the other consumer programs are driven at the point of sale. And so I'd argue that's where the program really needs to be, and also the cost of collecting that can be more accurately measured. But you're dealing with drugs that really are illegal unless they're being consumed by the person that has the prescription. Just to give you an idea, again, and I, you know, in the four-county area, we have the, really, three of the top orphan drug manufacturers, BioMarin, Raptor, and Ultragenics. Genentech has a plant in Solano County, which is more of a mainstream. Companies that are in Marin, they have a very small population, world population of 250,000 worldwide, so the relationship that these manufacturers have with their customers is very, very limited at best. Right now, there are 4,050 jobs in the life science industry in Sonoma County that account for about $2 billion of the $65 billion in the regional economy. So again, I look at it from a very pragmatic standpoint. I don't believe in any of the other recycling programs or capture, removing them from the mainstream collection system is burdened by the, the burden of that is put on the manufacturer. It's always at the point of sale where you have the opportunity to educate the consumer and make it convenient for them to drop off when they're getting their prescriptions refilled. So, thank you very much. Be glad to answer any questions. There's a recent report that was released by Rob Eiler on the life science industry in the four-county area, and I believe you did receive a copy of my letter.
We did. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
And we'll ask the clerk if maybe you can pass a copy to the board. Pete, followed by Andy Rogers, followed by Linda Reed.
Safe medicine. That's kind of an interesting concept. I forget what famous person in our past said, "The future doctors would be the nutritionists of tomorrow," whereas it's the food that's really, that's going to help us. The Big Pharma has created the sickest nation on earth. And Erin Brockovich, great movie, it's been on a few times in the last six months. I think two years ago, or a year ago, she said that there's over 220 communities in America that are worse off than Hinckley and Flint, Michigan. Let's see, we got about 50 states or so, 220 communities worse off than Flint or Hinckley. And, oh, I want to invite you to a party. There's a powwow going on in Sacramento on the 6th and 7th coming up this week. The Native Americans, women, especially the women, which of course are demonstrating courage, since there's no men in this country that have demonstrated courage in the last 40 years, really. They're leading the call to all women to join them in Sacramento for the continued growing pipeline, Dakota Pipeline protest. So they'll be in Sacramento on the 6th and the 7th, and you're all invited. So talking about opioids, gosh, wouldn't that fun the first time we tried them? All of a sudden, we were 18 years old again, our bodies felt great and all that kind of stuff, and then things just went from, went south after that. And we know that guys like Herbert Walker Bush and Jerry Brown got a lot of stock in Big Pharma. And the opioids, we know, have been over-prescribed like crazy for the longest time. 92% of all veterans are on opioids. And now they're going to do a major scale-back, which will be creating a new generation of heroin users, and there's no shortage of heroin on the streets or in the prisons. And the vets, of course, have been the most abused. 2 million vets in California still abused by Big Pharma, and also by Dr. Maurice Wallen's Slow Kill Vaccines that he started in 1992. We remember Dr. Maurice Wallen, he was caught in the 2000 Dateline Sting in Petaluma. And since that time, 5.7 million vets are dead, 5 million are now terminal. After all, why pay for extra monies after they've done their service, right? So, so we got Herbert Walker Bush, which is the biggest heroin dealer in the Western Hemisphere, who was given, of course, a break to California's Jerry Brown and his dad, Pat Brown, had brought in China White for over 60 years. So what should we do anymore? I think the women need to arise and shut down the system. I mean, that's what needs to happen. We're being poisoned everywhere. The water is all being poisoned.
Thank you, Pete.
And we're having meetings instead of doing actions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Efren Corillo.
Thank you. Andy Rogers, followed by Linda Reed.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Andy Rogers. I'm the Executive Director of the Russian River Watershed Association. For those who don't know, probably mostly behind me, the Russian River Watershed Association is a coalition of voluntary municipalities who've gotten together around really essentially a clean water initiative to pool funds and do projects and follow initiatives and support initiatives that lead to clean water. So the Russian River Watershed Association followed the leadership of the Sonoma County Water Agency and the City of Santa Rosa, who started to bring safe medicine disposal available to residents in the area. The Russian River Watershed Association helped make it regional, and so we've been working together with a fabulous subcommittee, many of which are here, and maybe I'll say, put your hands up, but an incredible group of folks who have put this program together to keep it consistent, to keep it safe, to keep it available to residents in the area. So one thing that we did early on in the program, seven, five, seven years ago, was we had a series of takeback events every single year. So we'd make, we'd have these events, we'd promote them, and people would come and talk to us about their medicines and drop off the medicines so they would be disposed of properly. I haven't known what to do with this stuff, finally a place to do it. And what we really, what they wanted to know is, well, can these be available in more places at, you know, all of the time, rather than just a couple events a year? So the effort has been to put bins around the watershed, and I'm talking about, I've been to Mendocino County too, and available to residents. And those have become, we've gotten up to 30-ish, I think we're at 30, 28 to 30 locations throughout the watershed. And you saw, we've passed the 100,000-pound mark, and we essentially put our takeback events out of business. That was a great thing. As a businessman, to aim to go out of business is an interesting perspective, but now what we want to do is, we want to get out of the business and get the people at the table that really should be at the table. So we want to continue to promote collection, and we want to, all of the benefits, the societal ills that we have to address along with the clean water, keeping medicines out of children's hands, educating our doctors not to prescribe. I was just at the doctor on Friday, I needed two pills to take for one day, and they gave me 60. So we know that there is a, there's a big problem here. Our board directed us earlier, last year, to talk to every city council in the county and bring back the results of that to the Board of Supervisors. And today, I'm really happy to come back to you with letters of support from all those councils. There was discussion and questions, so I know all the councils were engaged and listening. And so those letters mean a lot that are in front of you. So I really want to appreciate that. And our board members, Corio and Gore on the Russian River Watershed Association, and your involvement, and all the elected officials that are on the board, we're happy to be here today and can answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Andy. Linda Reed?
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm Linda Reed, Acting Director, City of Santa Rosa Water, and just wanted to come and show our support. We have staff in the audience who has been part of the committee, working very hard at the safe medicine disposal program. And as you know, the City of Santa Rosa owns and manages the subregional water reuse system with our partner agencies, Runner Park Katati Sebastopol and the South Park County Sanitation District. So we're very interested in continuing to work with the coalition and with the Board of Supervisors, and I'm very happy to hear you considering this ordinance.
Great, thank you, Linda. It's good to see you here. Are there any members, any other members of the public wishing to address the board on the study session before us? Seeing none, we'll bring the items back to the board, and I'm going to go backwards in order of comments and direction from the board. And again, just out of full disclosure for my part, I do serve on the Russian River Watershed Association and was part of that board that provided direction to staff, to Andy, and to our Chair, Mark Landman, who did, really did a tremendous job in going out to the various jurisdictions to advocate and provide the information, get their input, and really lay the groundwork for what could be a collective county-wide effort that includes the county and the cities in that arena. So again, just want to make sure I'm fully disclosing that capacity. Supervisor Zane, we're going to start with you. If there are any additional questions that have been stirred either by public comment or any direction, specifically like to provide to staff, this is really the board's opportunity to engage in what, if any, additional steps we would like to see. We'll start with you, we'll go to Supervisor Goran, and then we'll end with Supervisor Gore.
Thank you, Chairman Corio. You know, this is really a question about who pays, you know? I would probably argue that the $1.4 million that our local entities has paid for this program over the last seven years is probably the profit margin in one month for Big Pharma in this county. And given the, you know, this idea that somehow or other, this is going to affect the life science employees and growth of the life sciences in this, in industry in this county is, quite frankly, gentlemen, ludicrous. Pharma has a huge lobbying effort, and by the way, I think we're doing something right here in terms of healthcare policy when Big Pharma and Big Tobacco come in and lobby us against our policies. So way to go, staff. This is, no doubt, no doubt, a huge issue for us in terms of our water supply, but also in terms of the ER visits that happen every year with children. And it is, it is dangerous to have pharmaceutical drugs around the house when there are young children that are not being used, and yet most of us don't know how to conveniently and safely dispose of them. So the fact that, please, could you pull up the slide that has all the different jurisdictions that have already adopted this? Because I think that's important. I do not want to be here six months from now like the plastic bag ordinance. I will be really clear. That took us forever, it took us far too long, we were way behind the eight ball on that one. I want to be out in front on this one. And right now, we know that these counties, and the ones that have already worked with their city jurisdiction and adopted, is that right? Because you can't always see the asterisk at the bottom. Alameda and San Francisco, is that right?
Yeah, Alameda, just the City of Berkeley was the only one not covered, and they passed something that was matching the county's effort. And Santa Cruz was the only one who passed it, only in the unincorporated area, but had cooperation with the three cities. So two of them already passed something, and the third one is working towards passage.
Okay. And I know that there is some simultaneous efforts to get legislation passed at the state level to have the manufacturers cover these, the costs. And that's great, but I will say that having done a lot of work against Big Pharma over the years with my former hat as the CEO for the Council on Aging, I will say that you've got seven lobbyists in Big Pharma to every elected official, Sacramento and in Washington. No surprise it hasn't passed yet. It should be part of our direction today, that we continue to keep that on our legislative agenda and continue to lobby all of our local representatives that this is important. And I know Dr. Wood would no doubt probably agree with us, and probably Senator McGuire too, given his recent legislation on foster kids and psychotropics. So I think, when you're thinking, when you realize that the poison centers receive 500,000 calls every year because a child has gotten into prescription medicine, this to me is a no-brainer. It really is. This is a question of who pays. It shouldn't be the water agency, it shouldn't be the City of Santa Rosa, it shouldn't be the Russian River Watershed. They've all stepped up, thank God, we've all stepped up, thanks to efforts like yours, Susan, and the water agency, and thank you again so much. And the courageous leaders like Nate Miley from the Alameda County Board too, and my hat's off to Nate. But now it's time for us to do the same. And to, and I understand that if we pass this ordinance, that it's their job not only to pay, but to set it up and to make it convenient. Is that, is that true? Because that, all the details of that haven't been completely fleshed out, but somewhat.
They would be required to submit plans to the, I think it would be to Department of Health Services. And I know, like in Alameda County, they've formed some stewardship groups where member organizations can participate through that, through them. In fact, I just got a copy of a letter from Supervisor, from Nate Miley.
Oh, good.
And they discussed that, you know, they've received two plans that are in compliance with their ordinance right now. The larger plan is called the Med Project Stewardship Plan, and currently, that has over 300 producers participating as members. They're seeing some success in implementing the Med Project Plan, and it's supposed to span three years for full implementation. And so far, the Med Project Plan has facilitated a one-day collection event in their first year, and in their second year, I think they had about six, yeah, there were six, six takeback events. And their goal is to have 24 one-day collection events in 2016. And they're working to host kiosks in some local enforcement agency offices and pharmacies. And in this letter, Supervisor Miley reports that they have, that right now they have contracts with three law enforcement sites and nine pharmacy sites. So it's not fully implemented, but they're definitely making some progress.
Well, and that gives us a model also, which is great. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There was a comment also during the public comment that somehow or other, the manufacturers have no direct contact with the consumer. I couldn't argue against that more strongly. Pharma spends three times as much on marketing as they do on R&amp;D, three times as much. Every time you turn on the television, there's an ad. Every time you turn on the television, there's an ad directly marketing to you about the, the new famous drug that they've created that'll solve all your problems. They have every opportunity to directly advertise safe disposal programs and to pay for them, too. They don't want to cut into their multi-billion dollar profit margins. I say we make them pay, I say that we move ahead boldly, I say that simultaneously we go after our state representatives and make sure that this passes statewide as well so that we don't have to keep going back to court every time Pharma wants to attack a county for, for implementing this program. The extended producer responsibility legislation is good, and, and that's what we need to go after. I say that those taxpayer dollars, that $1.4 million that we have been spending, it's good money spent on the program, but we shouldn't be the one that pays, period. And I can think of a lot of things to do with that $1.4 million, so go for it.
So just to be clear, you'd like us to move forward on local ordinance? Okay.
You're going to summarize for me, so thank you.
Supervisor Gore, we'll go to you next.
And, and you could have summarized before she had even commented, it would have saved us a few minutes, but we, we actually love to listen to Supervisor Zane when she is on her soapbox, because she's articulate and passionate. I couldn't have said it better, it is great, let's move forward on this. Look at all of the other jurisdictions that have moved on this. I'm surprised that it has taken this long to get here, because we've been talking about this for a while. We spend tens of millions of dollars, maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars on health of our creek sheds and, and the water and the testing, and to minimize the discharge, the, the substances that are discharged into our creeks. This is just one more way that we can help make a difference. And, and so, yes, I, I think it's, the industry letters that we've received and the comments here today suggest that this, this will produce just a very minimal amount of effect. That may be true, but the precautionary principle says, if we can do it, do no harm, let's do no harm, and let's minimize and eliminate this kind of accidental or intentional discharge into our creeks. Can't even imagine what our poor fish are going through. They may have, we may have to have substance abuse programs for the fish, for their withdrawal. So, and I'm delighted that we're working with our cities, because it's, I think it's important to have a united front. I would like to see this move forward very fast and bring it forward. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Gore?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Corio and everybody. I think we, it's exciting to see we're moving forward with this, and I, I think one of the comments and, and the nice things is that when we talk about the time and coming forward, there was really yeoman's work done by Mark Landman and Andy Rogers in going out to each jurisdiction. It was, it's not, it's not easy, because you got to get on everybody's agenda. And, and I know there was a lot of work in doing that, too, with, I know Supervisor Rabbit helped, helped kind of facilitate with Petaluma to get it on their agenda and a couple different others. My big thing is that, is that this started with the Russian River Watershed Association, and when it came up, it was, it's, it's been completely, up until now, the dialogue has been focused on pills and pharmaceutical in that respect. I've gotten calls from Medtronic and Life Sciences and others that look at the Sharps issue. If we want to look at the Sharps issue, that's definitely something we should discuss, but I do want everybody to understand that the only thing that has been discussed with the, with every city in the resolution is the pills, is the over-the-counter, the OTCs. So, so, so I, I don't have a concern with us looking at the different areas, but for me, is what I'm, what I want to see come back is what we've, what we've sold up until now, which is this is a clean water issue, this is the Russian River Watershed Association, and if we want to come back and look at Sharps, we need to do the research and the outreach and other things, and that might be something that comes at a second round. I know there's been other ordinances in Alameda and others that look at that, but if we want to look at it now, I defer to my colleagues, but, but I'm, I'm interested in, in making sure that we, we deliver on what was brought forth. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for those comments, and just as a, kind of a quick summary of how it is we, we got here. You know, at, at the tail end of 2015, I got indication, coming in as Chair in 2016, that this board was interested in having the discussion and at least having further input as to how we would look at safe medicine disposal. My commitment was to have brought this forward very early on in 2016, in my chairmanship, to have that discussion. And, you know, as things happen, things get on our tables, they get on our desk, they get pushed out. And there was a, really a constructed effort that came out of the Russian River Watershed Association to try and build the ground-level understanding framework, support and engagement for local jurisdictions. You know, oftentimes, the county can find itself looking at county-wide issues, county-wide policies, and, and down the road, not bringing in our local jurisdictions and local partners, and at least have, you know, the finger pointed back, well, wait a second, you never talked to us, you never engaged with us. And I think that's not the case here. I think what we've done through Mr. Landman's work and through what the Russian River Watershed Association has done, is, is engage the cities through the collaborative to try and understand what the best practices are, what the nuances, the complexities, so that down the road, if there is a desire to approve an ordinance, that we would at least have that constructive mechanism to have that dialogue. So, I will take part of that responsibility, not have had this discussion earlier in the year, at least scheduled for a study session, and to get board input and to get board direction on this item. Today's discussion is not about an approval of an ordinance, is not about having a hearing of an ordinance, but I think it's giving an indication of where, where this board is on this issue, how important this issue is to this board, and, and a desire to have something come back to us sooner rather than later. I think that staff is going to have to figure out, in my opinion, what that timeframe looks like, because if it is this board's intention to develop a, a local ordinance, we will need to work with our local jurisdictions that we've already done to ensure that we're moving at parallel, parallel paths. At some point, if there's a desire for the cities to approve an ordinance or to move forward that gives us an ability to do a county-wide ordinance, that may be a direction we go to. To Supervisor Gore's comments around the specifics of what's included and what's not included, whether it does include the over-the-counter medications that are defined under the covered products, personally, I would be interested in at least including a conversation around the Sharps and having the information available to us that presents the, the information, that presents the data, that presents the best practices. What are the nuances in other jurisdictions? Why is it that some have moved forward and others have not? I think we can do that in a rather short timeframe. I don't think we need an extended time period to understand the nuances of what the Sharps mean. What I would like to see is at least the board be given the opportunities or the options, the pros and cons, and the board, at, at that point, may decide to include them, it may decide to not include them. But at the same time, it's going to be important, if what the city councils have heard to date do not include that in the next round or in this initial round of engaging the councils, we're going to have to make that part of that discussion and at least get some feedback. If we hear from the cities that, you know, this is an area that they're not interested, they'd like to deal with it down the road, that may stipulate the framework on how we deal with it, and maybe that is something that we do in a different phase. My guess is that the cities are going to be just as interested in the Sharps as the over-the-counter. I could be wrong, but, you know, if I was the city council, I would want to know at least what my options are to include, to have an expanded ordinance, and if there's any nuances to why, why we, we, we would not include that in there. Around the requirements with the participation, whether we look at voluntary and mandatory, the number of sites, you know, interestingly enough, I received a text message very early this morning from Chief Weaver in the City of Sebastopol. Their police station has a disposal center there at the Sebastopol Police Station that is open 365 days a year, 20, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, so at any point in time. And his response back, it's been very successful, it's been well-received, it's, it's working seamlessly. So he hopes that he's able to continue that in his local community, and again, potential expansion throughout. I think that is going to be one of the challenges, is how do we expand this? And how do we recoup the financial mechanisms that do consider the full life cycle? I think you're seeing a churn, you're seeing a theme, a, a change in tide at the state level, but I'm not willing to wait for the state to create a framework statewide that, that, that does, you know, has one component across the board. I think at the local level, we have the tools, we have the resources, we have the, the relationships with the local jurisdictions to institute something that works for us here in this county and works for, for our municipalities. So, you know, to Supervisor Zane's comment, I'd like to see this at least be formulated to come back as soon as we can. I, I don't want that to be a prohibitor from doing it right and doing it well. So, if it can get done before the end of the calendar year, great. If we need additional time to ensure we have the components in place that you hear from this, from this board, you know, an additional month or two would be fine. But I think that we could, based on what I've seen and based on the groundwork that's been laid already, I think we can do this within the next 60 days. It may be a bit aggressive to get on the, on the council calendars, to get on, to get the input and to get all the information we, we need, but I think it can be done. Obviously, we're going to have to weigh what the rest of the calendar holds for this board. The months of November and December are going to be very busy months with land use decisions, we've got public hearings, as well as other ordinances that are coming before this board that are going to take up a significant amount of resources from staff. So, with that, I just want to be very clear, I think you've received a direction from this board, that there is an interest in moving forward with the development of a local ordinance. There is an interest in working collaboratively, collaboratively with our local jurisdictions, and to, again, strengthen the collaborative that we had with the Russian River Watershed Association, Sonoma County Water Agency, the current city partners that have been a part of it. My guess is that this will expand to include every city within the county jurisdiction, and of course, our Health Services and Health Services Department, that's been, you know, to some extent, on, on the public health side, been leading this effort, along with our friends on the water, on the water side. So, if I missed anything, I'm just going to look to my board for any additional comment. I think I've captured the direction where this board is. Again, we're not voting on that today, but the board is giving an indication that it is very much interested in a local ordinance, very much interested in working with our local jurisdictions to ensure that we have something, or at least a framework, that incorporates all the incorporated cities and the unincorporated county. So, Brian or Susan, do you have any questions for the board or anything that I missed as far as what you're looking from, from us?
Nope, I think we're clear.
Okay. So just as a final comment, once again, I think you heard it from the, from the dais here. Thank you for your work, thank you for the time that you've spent on this thus far. I know that this is not something that the, the staff has just, has been working on over the last few weeks or few months. This has been really a few years in the making to getting to this point and at least providing the board an opportunity to have the study session, the public to provide input and comment. And finally, I think that it is going to be important, Supervisor Zane, as you've commented, for us to continue to work at the statewide level, to work on whatever legislative framework can help support our efforts at the local level. What I would hate to see is see legislation that debilitates our efforts at the local level, or, you know, God forbid, a referendum that tries to overturn. You know, you mentioned the plastic bag issue. Local communities have been working on local bag ban ordinances. We've been working across the board at the statewide level for, you know, to have legislation, do a plastic bag ban. And here we are, in this November, there's going to be two propositions, you know, that are, are, you know, are confusing. They're confusing, they are confusing the electorate on what the intent is with the desire to, again, speak for the big industry, specifically the plastic ban, the plastic bag industry. So, we need to be cognizant of that, that our work doesn't end at the local level, our work continues in Sacramento, it continues with our legislators to ensure that we can have the best ordinances possible for our local community. So with that, we received direction from the board. This is a study session, as well as the informational presentation. I don't think that we need to take an official vote today, I'm going to look at our county council, but I think that we have direction from the board. It's been very succinct and concrete, and once again, really thank our partners, the City of Santa Rosa that was here represented, the Russian River Watershed Association, the Water Agency and others that are part of this discussion. With that, the board, before moving to item 22, is going to take a brief five-minute break and will come back to take that item immediately after our recess.